Seven o'clock, call the meeting in order. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This customary will observe a moment of silence. Please keep in mind a member of our police department lost his father recently. So please keep the Connolly family in your thoughts and prayers. Okay, I'd like to announce this meeting is being recorded and televised by WHCA Cable. Seek a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Seek a motion to accept correspondence in the read file.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ananmous. Public forum, if anyone would like to speak about something that's not on the agenda.
Chairman Lamatina and members of the board, Don Varley, town clerk. I'm just here for just a couple of updates, some good news. Dog licenses are now down to 712. When we had talked and we sent out the notice, it was 1,454. So it's pretty much slowed down, but I think that's, I think that was a well worth vote by the board to do that. The second mailing of the census will be going out tomorrow morning. Initially, we sent out about 6,000 to 6,500. Tomorrow, we'll be sending out about 2,200 people, households that have not responded. So please, if you know, you haven't responded, or you know somebody, or anything like that, get the word out there. It's costly. But the final thing is, I went to conference for town clerks, and I kind of wanted to give you a quick update on the early voting and what the state has mandated. So basically, for, you know, this is for annuals. For state elections and state primaries, we are tied into doing early voting by mail and early voting in person, and that's set by statute. But for annual town meeting, they've left it a little bit in the ballparks of the towns. If you do nothing, if we do nothing, the town will do a early vote by mail only. So that's if you do nothing. If you want to opt out of doing early voting by mail, you, as a board, have to hold a public hearing and have, you know, have a hearing so the public can hear, and then you would have to take a vote to not do early voting by mail. Early voting by person is decided by the Board of Registitors, whether they want to bring it to the Board of Selectmen or not. You need 50% of the Board of Registitors. The Board of Registitors consensus is not to do early voting by mail. This is just for the annual because of the cost. There is no reimbursement. You get reimbursement for state elections. We've got $13,000 back. So the annual elections, you don't, you still gotta, whether you have one voter come in or 300 voters come in, you still have to staff it accordingly. So it's a costly thing. They can still do early. So if somebody comes in, and if we, if we stay in with the early vote by mail, and they say, I want an early voting ballot, because the silly thing is, is if somebody registers to vote, a new voter registration, we are required by law now to send them an early vote by, early vote by mail application. Even if we opt out of it all, we still have to send them an application for this year. So it's kind of silly, but the clerks have tried to fight for things to be more, more clear, but this is what you got. So like I said, if we do nothing, and that's my recommendation, and have just early voting by mail, and that way it does give people, because still, we still have absentee voting, but you have to qualify with the three reasons, which are you're not going to be in town, you're disabled, or religious reasons. So you, you will sign, you know, a statement to that. So it can't be because you want an early vote. There would be no early voting in person, or there is not going to be. So my, my recommendation to you, but I just wanted to make you guys aware of what's going on. Feel free to reach out to me if you have anything that, you know, you want to talk to me about with all that I got. My brain is full of so much information, so.
Okay.
And that's about it. And also, the nomination papers are still available. They'll be available until March 31st at 5:00 PM is the deadline to return them in. Do you want me to run through the slates real quick, or while I'm on?
Sure, real quick.
Sure. You got moderator, you got town treasurer-collector, selectman, two seats, assessor, pre-K through, pre-K through 12, Whitman Hansen Regional School District Committee, two seats, Department of Public Works, two seats, Public Library trustees, two seats, and then the Board of Health is one seat, and that's it. Thank you very much, you guys. Have a nice night.
Thank you. Okay. I'd like to seek approval of the meeting minutes for open session, January 24th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Ananmous. COVID-19 update, Chief Clancy.
Good evening. Just want to update you all. This past week, the town had 35 cases out of 291 tests performed for a positivity rate of 12.02%. You see a significant jump, about almost 4% in the positivity rate, but also realize that's, that's not always accurate. It was just based upon, we had, I believe it was seven additional cases, and we took, we did less testing. We're going to continue to watch the numbers, and we'll keep you advised as anything changes. And we are hoping to follow the prediction that we should see some numbers going down here shortly, but we're still not doing too bad.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. Budget presentation. Mr. Kane, Mr. Lyman.
Well, really more of an update rather than a presentation. Just as we're, as we're talking about the budget, just tonight, it's, we're going to take kind of like a high level view of the budget, not at a precise level. We, the stage we're at right now, I think we have a pretty good idea based on Mr. Lyman's presentation a couple of weeks ago. And I've been working with the Budget Working Group, including Mr. Lyman, and Ken, I tell the, who's been a huge help as far as getting, giving me a better understanding of the budget, and really a huge resource for the, the Budget Working Group. But really, the, tonight, we'll give a couple of updates on the revenue side and the expenditure side, and kind of where we fall as far as how that balances out. And then we'll probably take a couple of weeks to process, and obviously give the new town administrator time to really review the, the budget at a fine detail, so that she can really give her feedback, and then we'll, we'll take action in the future. But tonight anyways, just as a quick revenue projection, we're looking at the excise tax and, and the trash. Because we're through January now, and we have a good indication of what the first commitments were, without getting into the weeds, excise tax, 70% of the excise tax is collected in that first commit, commitment in January. So we have the bills sent out for excise tax in January, and we have a pretty good indication of where we're at. And surprisingly, we're doing really well. I thought for sure there's going to be a little bit of a dip in the excise tax, and as it turns out, we're $140,000 over what we collected last year at this time. So that's a really good indication that our estimates with both the excise tax and trash are really moving in the right direction for revenue. On the expenditure side, when we're looking at Article II, a couple of things that we've been reviewing recently at a, at a more detailed level is really the steps and lanes. Everything's fairly consistent with where it was a couple of weeks ago, but as we, as we get into more detail and more precise numbers and getting the feedback from the department heads, we realized that this year is a bit of an anomaly for the steps and lanes, mostly in public safety, because, because of the way it was negotiated recently, and the, I think specifically in the fire department, there's a good amount of guys who'd happen to hit 20 years. So that number really was much higher than what we had estimated in our original Article II projection. So a little bit more on the expenditure side with some of the salaries there, but a little bit more on the revenue side as well. So kind of balanced out. Big picture again, when we're looking at our level service, we, we ran a, a projection for level service, and then we ran the projection with the numbers, the new numbers that have all pretty much come in from the department heads, not quite all of them, but most of them. When we look at level service, and that does include some of the, the salary stuff that we're talking about, and a couple of other things, like the, there's, there's still some shifts that aren't filled at the police department, and we're taking a step to help fill those, just like we did last year. So that's included in the level service. But if we look at level service and the school's at 5%, we're really close to a balanced budget. A little, we're still a little bit short, but we're close to a balanced budget there. And I, I do want to take a quick second, because this was brought up a little bit at the school committee. We still don't know exactly where the school committee is going to come in, where the schools coming in with their budget. We have them in at 5%. Looks like they're going to come in more, but with our level service, we ran it at 5%. And it was brought up specifically by Don Byers, where she, she asked a question about what the town can afford. And she talked about a, a false narrative, in a sense, meaning that there's a little bit of, little bit of confusion in, in the community about this. And I think it would be helpful for me to address it just quickly. What we can afford, what we're calculating with the, with the Article II level service and the schools at 5%, is pretty much what we can afford within the tax levy. She seems to be making a bigger argument about what the town could afford if we didn't take into account the tax levy and just compared to other towns. And that's a different kind of big picture argument. I think for us, one of the things that we need to really consider is what we can, we can afford within the tax levy. And the information that we got back through the Madden report was pretty clear. The 5% or up to 5% with the towns, if we use that number and we, we level service our town departments, do we have a balanced budget? And right now, we're relatively close to that. So for me, it still seems relevant that that 5% is really a good number to use. As far as the, the second column, and can, can maybe speak to this more in more detail, but the second column, if we include a bit higher number with the schools, and we include the, the numbers that were coming in from department heads, the budget gap is a little bit over $1 million. So that would be a, a bigger gap to, to obviously close. If we look at the first pass with the department heads, as they presented to the, the Finance Committee, that gap is still at over, over $1 million.
I think the other thing we should note is that the 5% we're kind of downplaying the impact of the 5% on the town. I agree with the analysis that John Madden did, and I agree that we need to support education. We need to support what we're doing in the school system. Otherwise, what's the point? However, the 5% absorbs every dollar of revenue that we grow, and then some. And that's the thing we have to keep in mind, that we continue getting additional revenue from other local receipts, but at some point in time, just like the 3% budget growth started to become unattainable at the district level when we had state support and it faded, we're now building a budget that's going to be difficult to maintain, even, even at 5% with the efforts we're making. So it becomes more critical that we look at jointly, look at growth and expenditures, and try to work together to make this thing work, because ultimately, it's going to come down to what the voters are willing to spend.
Yeah, just to keep in mind, I noticed that you level, you're level funded the schools because we haven't come with a budget. Now, even though South Shore Tech's budget for the full year is 2.25%, and we, the statutory method makes Whitman the lowest paying town per student, because of the statutory method. But I think we have 11 new students, even at the lowest amount of like, it's like 14 grand or something a student, you're talking about $165,000 increase in the budget, due to the fact that there's more kids going from the town of Whitman. So, and that's not reflected in this, and that's just another bridge we got to cross.
And, and I would suggest that next year, when we get through this budget cycle, we start earlier, and we look more seriously at what options we have when we actually come to budget time. I know we're, we're used to doing an October and December thing, but as these two pieces get closer together, I think we have to start looking longer and harder at things.
Well, I would say, after attending the school budget hearing last week, I am a little concerned that a, a ceiling, they have not voted a ceiling. It definitely seemed, in my opinion, that they're going to take the next two to three meetings to talk about adding and take us right to the 45-day mark before they set a budget. So when we talk about doing things earlier and, and collaboration, I, I certainly have not seen it. You know, I, I don't think the superintendent has reached out to you to have any type of a real discussion, but, you know, we've given this guideline four years now, I think. And it, as you can see, if we, if we follow those Madden recommendations, maybe not to a T, but, you know, use them as the guidelines they are, it produces a budget that we can make do with, even though it's starting to outpace what we're going to take in by two and a half. It is frustrating that, I know the, I gave you the handouts, Frank, and I think everyone probably got them online by now, but.
It was eye opening.
There is a lot of things that possibly could be added between now and then, that we will not be able to fund in this budget. So my hope is, is after tonight, I would like to see you get with the Hanson Town Administrator and, and possibly have a meeting with him. And I think this is a great foundation between Ken, Sean, and Frank, and yourself, to take to him and show him the reality of what we're dealing with.
Leslie Dior was also involved from the Finance Committee as well. Maybe in the future, something I'd like to potentially talk about at a future meeting is capital and debt. Looking, getting a closer look at the debt that's gonna, we're potentially going to take on over the next couple of years, specifically with the DPW and the potential middle school.
And yet a South Shore Tech, you have that project.
Yeah, so adding those, it'd be good to do some quick analysis on some debt ratios. What do healthy communities have for a healthy, a healthy amount of debt? And how do we compare that with where we're at now? You know, because right now, we are really low as far as debt goes, but as we take steps with South Shore and with the DPW, and then with the middle school, how is that going to affect our debt ratio? I think that'll be a good number to, to discuss. And also capital, I think the capital meeting is going to, the capital committee is going to meet over the next couple of weeks. So maybe at a future meeting.
I really think it's important when we look at the debt option that we realize, we've been funding most of our capital improvements through free cash. That's not always going to be possible. And, and debt management is part of the process for capital, significant capital improvements. But the trade-off is, you have to pay for it. And, and we have to look at it in terms of its relationship to the total budget, but also in terms of its affordability to the bottom line. And that's, you know, that, the advantage of debt is you can go long-term. Last year would have been the perfect time to borrow everything, at 2%.
Now not so much.
You know, we've got to look at all the options.
I just, I want to thank the Budget Group. This is a really valuable document, I think, guiding us going forward. And if we can kind of continue this process every year, I mean, it'll help shape how we look at the whole budget cycle. It's, it's really, so yeah, thank you. My first couple of takeaways from it was actually the, and I think Sean kind of talked about it, the town budget increase is also almost 5%. So, you know, the Madden recommendation there was to try to keep it around two and a half. And I know we've talked previously about the Plymouth County retirement number, that's coming in at $430,000 increase on a, you know, two and a half million dollar line. That's a, that's a serious driver. But it is, you know, if, if we're going to ask the schools to try to live within the Madden recommendations, we should probably also try to do that ourselves.
Yeah, but also, there's some, some of the budgets we can't control, like the Plymouth County, you know.
I mean, they also have to pay retirement, too. It's.
Right. Some of those things that, you know, they, we can't control. I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah, but if, if, I guess my point is really, if, if the town is looking at maybe 4% growth in our, our budget, that would be an 8% assessment from the schools, because they're, we're covering, you know, because the state aid is not increasing, we're covering double the growth within their budget. So it, I talked a lot about this at the kind of joint meeting between the two Boards of Selectmen, the FinComs from both towns, and the School Committee, in trying to come up with a, a budget projection that is, that is actually fair, knowing that every increase that the school sees is assessed to the towns doubly. It needs to be kind of, that needs to be understood by both sides. It's not just a, we can't look at an 8% assessment and throw our hands up when we have, you know, 4% ourselves. It's an equivalent number.
But then you have each department that needs to look at their individuals, school, both schools included. I mean, when you, when you look at South Shore Tech at a 2.25.
And if that were Whitman Hansen, it'd be five and a half.
Right. So I mean.
With the same budget increase, because there's no state aid coming in. Whitman Hansen would kill for $14,000 a student. They're seeing, I think we fund them at 6,000, maybe seven now?
Well, but you know, that, that's an artificial number, too, because the other towns take in their Chapter 70 money and then pay it out.
Sure, and redirect it.
And you, you got to look at that piece.
Yeah.
If the Chapter 70 were coming in, our upper number would be 24 million higher than it is. It still doesn't change the fact that we're in the bottom tier when it comes to payments per pupil, but, but, you know, comparing numbers can be done many different ways, and we want to be clear that the focus should be on net-net.
And actually, the good news, per pupil, we're pretty close to having Tenny's Bridgewater, I think, hang over some of our, our surrounding communities now, too.
And, and you start to wonder how, how that graphic actually relates to real life, because I think Hingham is in the.
Well, they're, yeah, they're in our league, so they were always compared to it, yeah.
Right. So, you know, and then, then when you start talking about percentages, you know, I think some people, obviously, we have a pretty good take on it because we're seeing all the documents, but when you start talking five, you know, one of the school committee members made a comment of, well, if they get three, why don't we get three? Well, their three is 1.2 million, and our three is $192,000. So it, it's not comparing apples to apples. So it's just not, they, we should get the same percentage. At the end of the day, yes, we, we have to fund the schools properly, but you've got to also look at how much money.
Oh, remember, that's the way Chapter 70 works.
I think.
We don't all get the same percentage. We get it based on need.
And I think our budget grows because, as a board and as a town, we decided to, to make some gross step, growth steps last year, within a couple of departments. So I, I think it's very transparent and explainable where our increases are coming from. I can't say the same after that meeting the other night. So, Mr. Kane?
Just that, the, the Madden recommendation was made years ago, before things like COVID and, you know, the statutory method, and people questioned like, well, is that 5% a relevant number? And for me, I think the key is, the practical definition for me is, how can the town level service and pay the schools? If, if our, if our assessment to the schools cuts into the services of the town at a level service, then that means we're kind of working the wrong direction, and we need to get an override. This came out of the Budget Override Committee. You know, so practically speaking, I think the question is, if the town's level serviced, what, what do we have left to pay the schools, which is at 5%? Can we do that? One thing that's not being discussed is the inherent, the school, right now, the school budget is not sustainable. That is the truth. That's why we're in the hold-harmless situation. So right now, because the, the school enrollment has dropped almost 1,000 students over the last 10 years, the, the way that state recognizes that is, you, you put into the hold-harmless situation, they don't take away state funding, but they're not adding it at the same level at which the organization would traditionally be growing. That's the inherent flaw that we have to deal with. And the, ultimately, the question's going to be, do they want an override in order to help correct this? And can they show that over five years, that an override would correct it? And I would like to see that, and I would like to see that analysis. But for right now, what we can't do is, we can't fund the schools at a level that's going to slowly erode town services over time. That would, we can't do that. That doesn't, that's not right. That's not fair. You know, so it's a difficult dilemma that we're in, but I think that is the hard truth of it, man.
And that's the reason to start early.
Anyone else?
If Kane has anything.
Kane?
Yeah, so the impetus behind wanting to do this is just to kind of see, like, what is like the bare minimum, like, where, where can our budget not go below? So that I wanted to get, like, the, the salaries and the steps and lanes at like a minimum, so that this is what we have to start with. And going back to the, the revenue piece with the schools, there's another section in that file that shows what the increase was, again, preliminarily, from last year to this year. And if you take, if you take out what we would be giving for the schools for 5%, plus the Plymouth County retirement increase, that leaves just $80,000 left for everything else on the level service budget, which isn't happening. So. And there's, I mean, there's some other, I mean, there's, we could, we could adjust some revenue items, too, particularly in the local receipts section, although that could put us in danger of losing money for free cash to fund the capital projects. We have been fairly fortunate over the last several years to get very high, for us, free cash at the end of the fiscal year. Two of the biggest drivers to that, I believe, are what we turned back from Article II, and the gap in what we estimate for local receipts compared to what we receive.
We've been pretty conservative with that.
Yeah. We've, we've turned back a lot over the last few years, and it's, it's unpredictable. And there's some, and some things you can plan for with the local receipts, like how much the trash bills are going to be, you know, everyone, you have to pay it, that's how much money you're going to get. But it's, as much as we'd love to get what we've been getting from free cash the last couple of years, you know, as Frank said, it's not something we should really count on year after year, because this level that we've gotten the last few years, it's, it's never happened before in the town.
Right. Anyone else? Thank you, Kane. Thank you, Sean. From Selonam and Leslie Dior, I think, um, they have this document. She was going to take this to them.
I'll make sure she does, yeah. Okay.
All right. Moving on to new business, Facilities Manager. Mr. Dakota.
I don't like following the Budget Report, but.
Well said.
How will you spend the remaining $80,000?
I can spend it. I come before the board for a request to, to ask for the consideration of hiring a additional full-time maintenance person for our facilities. I can talk, I can go back and explain how maintenance has kind of morphed since I started about 15 years ago to where we are today. It's been a big change. When I first started here, my responsibilities were the town hall, and that included, you know, cleaning the town hall and the, and the snow removal. At that time, Frank will fill in any gaps that I missed. There was a part-time maintenance person at the library, part-time at the police station, and part-time at the senior center. My first three years here, those positions dissolved, or four years, those positions dissolved, and it kind of fell on me to take care of the remaining buildings. I think police at the time still had a part-time associate, maintenance person. So I did that for about three, maybe two or three more years, and then we hired a higher-will full-time maintenance person. And that took the orders off. Me, I was back to town hall, still kind of assisting at some of the buildings, but it made my life a lot easier. Then that dissolved, and I went back to taking care of all the buildings. And then we hired an outside company. Outside company came in for, I think, maybe a year, maybe two. I was still kind of, I was the, I was the main point for the department heads in those buildings, to contact me if something was going on over there. That dissolved, and then it fell on me again, all the buildings, for a good period of time, a long, a long period of time. And I was, I was probably averaging around 60 hours a week for three years straight. And that included all the snow removal. We did have a part-time associate on the weekends that did help with the snow removal, which was huge. Now, with the new position that I'm in, the part-time. Now, with the new position that I'm in, the part-time maintenance associate went into the full-time union, but it's a lot of buildings to cover for one person. And, you know, he's actually going on vacation in March, so I got to make sure my calendar's completely clear. I can't set up any appointments or really do too much, you know. So it's just, it's becoming a burden. The police station alone, I know Chief has an outside company there three days a week, but that building alone is a minimum 30-hour-a-week building, minimum. And, you know, we're not even really touching that one too much, where he's got the outside company, but it's still not sufficient, you know, to have that. So it's definitely not a want, it's an absolute need to have. So I'm just asking you guys to consider that, you know. I know money's tight and budgets are tight and everything, but it is definitely something that we do need.
What'd you call that, Dan? One more rock in the knapsack?
I have a question. Todd, are you looking for another custodial staff or maintenance?
Maintenance.
Maintenance. So we have a part-time maintenance now.
Right now, we have a part-time maintenance person that we had, who was a maintenance technician, kind of around, did repairs, he worked Fridays and Saturdays, eight hours, 16 hours a day. He, when I took the new position, he moved into the union position of maintenance full-time.
Right, that's Michael.
Yep. So now, I'd like to go back to, we had a higher-will full-time maintenance person, and I'd like to go, so basically, I have two. One would be union, one would be higher-will. That's my feeling on it.
Right, but Mike, who was maintenance, who was maintenance, is now custodial.
Yep.
Right? It's not the same.
Yeah, okay, yeah, if you, yep, if you want to, yes.
And so now what you want is somebody that, basically what Mike was doing, to take over what Mike was doing?
No, to basically, Mike is now doing the town hall, the library, the senior center. So I'd like to take the, the library's a big building, needs to be taken care of, that's a good 20 to 25 hours, and you still get the senior center, that's another 10 to 15 hours, you know, at least, if not more. I mean, to be truthful with you, we probably need a full-timer and another part-timer, but I know that's not going to happen.
Okay, the police station and the DPW, if those are two, the police station, excuse me, and the senior center.
Police station, senior center, town hall, and library.
Is there anything in their budgets that for maintenance?
That I, that I don't know.
Because if they're hiring, like, if the police station is hiring outside, and if we eliminate that and hire somebody for the town that will take care of the police station, right? And of course, the chief will have to know exactly, you know, I don't know.
Right.
I knew you could get them up.
You know, one does one offset the other. I'm just asking.
I think part of the issue is control. So when Todd was doing everything, we could get ahold of him when we needed to. Some of those outside vendors who have come in in the past, they were doing DPW, police station, council on aging, library, no one knew where they were or what they were doing. So when they came in at a bare minimum and showed up, we were kind of thankful. So then they went away for a short time. COVID hit, and we needed someone in on a more permanent basis, which is what we did, and they're working out fantastically. So I really don't want to change that as far as custodial services go. As far as maintenance goes, that's been pretty much lacking. We have an 11-year-old building now, and things need to be done along the way, which Todd has addressed those big things, bigger items that need to be repaired or replaced along the way, but a lot of little things. Some of the doors don't latch properly, some painting could be done, just wear and tear things that are going to bring the station back to life or maintain it over a long period of time. If you don't maintain it, it's not going to last as long as it normally would, and that's what I think we're trying to get to.
And we got some major infrastructure within the building, the server room needs a backup clone system. It's failed a couple of times, so that's something we're looking into. There's the HVAC control systems, we're upgrading that right now.
But something like that, you'd have to go to an outside custodial.
Right, right. So, you know, if Chief actually keeps the three-day outside company in, the full-time maintenance person that we hire, that's going to be doing the library, the senior center, can fill in the gaps in between where that cleaning company isn't there. If Chief has an issue with something going on, maybe there's a, some kind of training going on on a particular night in the training room, you know, something needs to be cleaned or something, we have that, you know, we have that resource now. Right now, we don't, we just don't have the resource. We're barely keeping up with the library, the senior center, and the town hall to give them the, to give them the tension that they that they need, that they deserve. You know, we're trying to upgrade and do things through all the buildings, and it's just kind of hard to keep it, you know, it's like your house, you know?
I was just going to ask, Chief, is that currently a CARES or ARPA-funded outside cleaning services, or is that built into the budget?
Ours, it's built into the budget now.
I won't take that away.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
I want to build upon what Todd was saying. We have some infrastructure problems. I, single-handedly, have been keeping them busy with our station. We've had some significant problems. We have projects moving forward, but we have had some significant issues, rightly so this weekend. We had two fairly significant issues that I kept Todd busy for most of the weekend. And if we had, those incidents were unforeseeable, they just kind of happened. But a lot of the stuff that we're working towards at the fire station to keep it usable and in great condition, I have been taking up a ton of his time, and I know that he's been doing that with all the buildings, and the problem becomes, he's only one person, and Michael's trying to do all these other buildings. And I mean, I think Todd can agree, I could probably keep you busy 40-plus hours a week just at my station.
All right, I could see us, you guys get a job description, we put together salary ranges, and we maybe take it up the next meeting, Frank?
And the reality is, as we start talking about the budget tonight, this isn't a year to add. Unfortunately, I can't remember the last year that was a year to add, but we'll address the needs as best we can. I appreciate you bringing this forward. I understand probably better than most of the people in the room what's involved in that, and we recognize that between you and Mike, you're holding it together with duct tape and glue, so I thank you for that, and we'll work on coming up with something and then trying to work it into this budget, into a subsequent.
That's all I ask.
Yeah, I just think trying to find somebody right now, especially with what the market we see out there, that's going to be qualified to be able to do these maintenance things that we need. You and I have had this discussion.
I just want to put it on the radar.
Having somebody qualified that is more construction-based.
And on another note, I just want to let you guys know that, the board know that I, my facilities report should be done in the next week or two, and that will be coming out, you guys will all get a copy of that, and I'm also doing a needs assessment on each building as well, which will be separate, so you guys will be receiving that as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, act on the resignation of Don Byers from the position of member of the Whitman Cultural Council, effective January 20, effective this evening, I guess, February 7, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Take action to rescind the appointment of Lisa Riley as Assistant Deputy Director, Administration, WEMA.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Take action to appoint Amy Desmond to the position of Assistant Deputy Director, Administration, WEMA through June 30, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Anamis. Take action to rescind the appointment of Brandon Griffin from the Community Preservation Committee Planning Board Representative, effective February 7, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Anamis. Take action to appoint Adam Somerville to the Community Preservation Committee Planning Board Representative for an indefinite term.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Anamis. Take action to correct the date of expiration of the appointment of Robert Kimball as Associate Member of the Board of Appeals to June 30, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Act on the request of Chief Clancy to declare old firefighter gear as surplus material and to donate said gear to the Fire Cadet Program at South Shore Technical High School.
Oh, yes.
Approved.
Second.
Motion.
Second.
Do I detect a conflict of interest?
Oh, hey.
I think we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Act on the request of Chief Clancy to declare an ambulance stretcher as surplus material and donate said stretcher to Brockton Hospital.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I used it today.
Yeah, they probably did.
Act on the request of DPW Superintendent Bruce Martin to declare a 2,000 Chevrolet ambulance VIN number 1GBKC34F4YF434466 as surplus material.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
What was that number again?
Okay. Act on the request of Paul Capelletti on behalf of the Whitman Little League to conduct its opening day parade on Saturday, April 22, 2023, beginning at 9:00 a.m.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All business. Mr. Lyman?
Last two weeks ago, the board met, we met in executive session and came up with a proposal, negotiated said proposal, which was accepted by the incoming town administrator, and I'm pleased to announce that she has accepted the position and will begin working on February 21st, although I'm already loading up her email. And while I'll be happy to assist in the transition, I'm looking to that light at the end of the tunnel to go back home and do what I was doing when I was doing nothing.
And I think, Frank, you know, that the board and the town absolutely thank you for coming back, and I think the transition, you're going to make that as smooth as it possibly can be, and.
I'm excited for the town. We're moving into a new era, different focus, and I have nothing but confidence in the board's selection of Mary Beth Carter as TA.
All right. Mary Beth is in the room tonight. Do you want to come up and say a few words again?
I would like to thank each one of you again for this wonderful opportunity to be your next town administrator. I truly appreciate your confidence in me. I have known many of you for several years and a few of you for over 19 years. You know my work ethic, and it has not changed. I will work tirelessly as an agent of the Board of Selectmen to carry out mandates and policies set by you. This time of year, the budget and the upcoming town meeting are top priorities. I plan to work collaboratively with department heads, boards, and committees to assist in the preparation and final presentation to the Board of Selectmen of the annual operating budget for fiscal year 2024. While I know that the budget process is already in full swing, I intend to get right to work on it when I return to Whitman on February 21st. I am really looking forward to being back in Whitman. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Thank you.
Mary Beth, point, Mr. Chairman, I think you need to announce that we have reached an agreement and signed a contract.
Okay, yes, we have reached an agreement and have a signed contract, and like Mr. Lyman said, on February 21st, 2023, Mary Beth will be in office. Let the calls begin.
Thank you.
Do you want to leave your current number in case people want to get a head start?
Okay, continuing, Frank?
I had a request to place a vending machine or machines at Memorial Field for the teams that use the space. I had some minor concerns that mostly centered around, how do we provide for it? We have to install power, there's the potential for vandalism, which we have seen over there from time to time. So I reached out to Bruce Martin and asked him what his opinion was, since they do maintain the fields. And he had similar concerns, including the likelihood that if you're going to put machines out there and they're available all the time, you're going to see bottles on the ground, you're going to see damage. And I'm just not so sure it's worth taking that step. I know most kids today come with their own reusable bottles, they order their Gatorade, and they carry it with them. So I'm reaching out to you to say that I have received this, and I'm recommending that we not move forward with it, but certainly am happy to hear any difference in opinion.
Frank, isn't there a bill, isn't there a shed that the baseball built there? Is it Memorial Field, the one next to the police station?
You wouldn't fit the machine in it.
You couldn't. What would happen if they were to build in addition to that shed for the machines to be in there and locked up and then only open when games were open, were on?
Well, I guess somebody would have to take on their responsibility.
Or it would be the baseball, I mean, baseball is one that is asking for it, right?
Well, it's not baseball so much as the individual who's done this in the past and has recently moved to Whitman.
See to that, or maybe we get a volunteer, maybe we get somebody who, they'll bring a truck in if they want, you know, like they do at the park, when they have music in the park, they bring a couple of trucks in, and people want to buy drinks or something like that, maybe they can do that. A vendor.
My observation is it's a solution looking for a problem.
Right.
I rarely see kids unprepared for a couple hours of baseball and their drinks, and fortunately, at the middle school fields, there's a snack shack, but again, I.
I can see them breaking in in weekends and things like that.
So my only concern with the, I'm sorry, I'll get to it in a second, was that, after reading it, yeah, it seems like a private vendor for, I maybe have a different take if it was actually Whitman Baseball investing and they were profiting and raising funds for the league. That was my main concern.
We haven't discussed that, but I'm assuming that that would be rolled back into the, into the group, but would certainly, if we entertained it, be a condition that this not be a private profit venture.
Right.
I do know that that involved, he didn't reach out to me, and it seems like a highly motivated guy who's willing to do a lot of the work to make something like this happen. I agree, it doesn't sound like quite the right fit, but I think with maybe the right connection, whether it's the, like, him teaming up with an organization like Whitman Baseball to brainstorm how, I think his major concern was, he was lugging out a bunch of water and things and fluid for kids during practice, why not just have it readily available? So I think that can be, they can troubleshoot together, you know, connected with the right organization, so I don't know that it has to be a vending machine, but something to solve that problem, but.
Like a vendor shows up at games or practices, whatever.
Something, but he seems like a super nice guy, he's willing to do the work, but.
I mean, he did say he's an electrician and would handle the wiring piece. You know what I see happening in the park is a lack of respect for facilities. That's an area that, we've had a little bit of vandalism, not a lot, but a little bit. And it's sad that we look at these things now with, how do we protect the environment and how do we protect the equipment? Because there's a few people who don't have any respect for themselves or their surroundings. But I, you know, I'm really not, I'm not adamantly opposed to it, I'm just not sure it's a good idea.
Didn't the, excuse me, but didn't the town vote to put cameras in the back last town meeting?
It did. It's a.
Yeah.
I don't know if they've.
Not on Memorial Field. Not on Memorial Field.
No, but I'm just saying, you're talking about the town park, I agree. I mean, it gets used from a load of times.
Do the, chief, do the police cameras cover that?
Yeah, we have a number of cameras that face both the street. One is in front of the station, and you can point it towards the park for a limited view. There are a couple of cameras out back as well, on the Sallyport, whether they can be adjusted to look out over the field.
Just to.
Believe they should be, but.
Didn't town meeting vote to have cameras put on? And we're talking about some of the light poles and things like that?
In the park, correct. That's in the works, yes.
All right.
Is that it?
Do you want to put a vending machine in the lobby of the police station?
No. It's there already.
Go back to.
One of the cells?
That might be one of the better places, though, if you're going to put it somewhere, maybe not out in the field, but we can monitor it probably a little bit better from there. You know, those cameras aren't monitored all the time. They're active, but they're not monitored necessarily, depending upon which ones we're looking at, for whatever reason. You know, when we have guests out back in the cells, those are, our primary screens go to that, so. It takes away from the other cameras. Anything else?
I think that's it. I was wondering if the ones reached over by the little shed out there. I think you kind of have some consensus there, Frank. And the last item.
Yeah, we have, we reached out to Hanson regarding regional accounting. They are not interested in pursuing that. They want to go ahead and hire their own, and I understand that. I would like to point out two other things. Our cable license expires in 2024. Typically, we start negotiating 18 months before the license expires. In our last round, where I felt that the biggest single beneficiary of the license negotiation was the Cable Access Company, I notified them that I would expect them to pay for the legal costs associated with negotiating the license. They, in fact, did. Bill Solomon, who is the preeminent authority in cable licensing, is now negotiating for Hanson and is prepared to negotiate for us. I have confirmed that the Cable Access Corporation will be absorbing the cost associated with his legal services. And I would like permission to enter into an agreement for him to handle the license renewal.
Do you have a motion on that? I'll make that motion, he's been doing it for years, he knows it all. He's been doing it right from the get-go.
Second.
All right, so the motion is for Bill Solomon to proceed on behalf of the town of Whitman for an agreement with WHCA Cable.
With fees to be paid by WHCA.
Fees to be paid by WHCA Cable, all right. Have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
May as well just ask the Verizon question that comes up every year. Verizon's still not interested in coming to town?
They don't even take our calls.
I know.
They're, they're getting away from the cable infrastructure. And it, with 5G, I guess they're getting closer to the point where they don't need wires anymore, as long as they can string repeaters around town. That was MetroCom 20 years ago, they were ahead of their time.
I have a question, Frank. Once they negotiated, will know what, will get the results before, and then we can, we vote on it?
Well, yeah, the board has to approve any license. There have been some changes in how the feds look at cable licensing. They're allowing cable companies to treat in-kind services as part of their community fee, thereby reducing what they actually have to pay out of pocket. And that's a tricky area, because no one's really sure how to handle that. In fact, that came up in our discussion, so it'll be interesting to see how they work through that.
All right. We're all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
And finally, just an announcement. The Public Works Department has two employees that are involved in reserve military service. We have an employee who's actually going to basic and advanced training, so he's going to be gone for probably 18 to 20 weeks. And we have another employee who's just going on his annual training, which would be two weeks. The, under the rules governing reserve military personnel, the town is responsible for paying the difference between their regular salary and what they're paid by the government during that two-week duty, or if they're working on a weekend, on their weekend business. We are not, however, responsible when someone goes into a full commitment for basic and AIT. So that employee will be supported by the payment he receives from the military service. It also affects insurance, because it's adjusted during the time he's in service, because he doesn't have to pay premiums to maintain his regular town insurance, and that's reinstated soon as he comes back. I just wanted to share that and let people know we still have people who are committed in serving both the community and the country. And I'm pleased to be able to say that.
Absolutely. All right, seeing that has exhausted our agenda, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.